Good evening. We're going to call the meeting to order. This is the Planning Commission's regular meeting. It's June 1, 2017, 6:30 at Sammamish City Hall. And it is currently 6:32 PM. We are going to start this evening with a call to order. I'll start on my right.
Call to order.
I'm sorry. Start with the roll call. I always do that.
Jane Garrison.
Matthew Petrich.
Eric Brooks.
Shanna Collins.
Larry Crandall.
Nancy Anderson.
Okay. And I think that means that we are all here this evening. No, there's one.
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. Racine. We're missing Racine O'Farrell this evening. And I wanted to make note that I won't be here for the June 15 meeting, which is our next meeting.
Nor will I.
Okay. Anybody else?
I might not be here either.
Okay. We could be closing on not having a quorum. So we'll just keep tabs on that. And once you guys, once you know for sure, Nancy, will you let staff know? Yeah, let Kevin know. Okay. So the next thing on the agenda is actually the approval of the agenda. So has everyone had a chance to review the agenda for this evening?
I move that the agenda as distributed be approved.
Okay. And there's a motion to approve the agenda. All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. No. And the agenda is approved, 5-0. The next item on the agenda this evening is the approval of the minutes from May 18. Has anyone, has everyone had a chance to look at those? I'm actually not sure that I've seen them.
I looked at them online, and the dates matched up well. And I'm not really a proofreader. So I found no fault with them and moved they be adopted, hoping there's no edits.
Any edits? Commissioner Garrison, did you see anything in the minutes?
I wasn't at that meeting.
That's right. Okay. Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Okay. All those in favor of approving the minutes from May 18, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed, say no. And the minutes are approved, 5-0. I'm sorry. I keep saying 5-0. It's 7-0 or 6-0 tonight. Gosh. And so we will move on to public comment. And this is the time during the meeting when the public has three minutes to speak on a non-agenda item. So this evening's agenda items are the Title 24 update, which is the update to the Comprehensive Plan Amendment process, and also the transportation element update. So any comments not related to those items, we can speak now. Is there anyone who'd like to speak this evening?
With the Chair's approval, I'd like to make just a comment, which is almost, is fairly important. I have been, I don't like to use the personal pronouns, but I have been selected to serve on an editorial board for a local newspaper. Hopefully, that information will be out in tomorrow's edition. If not, it's going, there's going to be five citizens, plus the publisher and the editor. But the main thing is, by the rules and regulations of setting up that editorial board, it's really for endorsements of candidates and initiatives, et cetera. So you or your immediate family are not to contribute to any campaign, endorse any candidates, or do any other way of supporting them. So that means myself, I am not being rude, but I won't be speaking to candidates at the farmer's market or here at the meeting. Okay? And I just wanted to share that. There should be no problem, problem right now of serving on this advisory board because we're just giving advice and not making decisions. But there's still, we're looking at that.
Okay. Thank you. So is there anyone to speak on the public comment section this evening? It doesn't look like it. Okay. So we will move past public comment, and we will move on to the Title 24 update. It will include a public hearing. So the way we'll work this tonight is we will hear a presentation from staff. Then I will open the public hearing. We will hear public comment, public testimony. I will close the public hearing. Then we will have a recommendation on the table. We can second it for deliberation. At that time is any time that we would make amendments that we see fit to the Title 24A process. And then we will, then we can vote on whether or not we approve or disapprove of the Title 24 update. So with that, I will turn it over to staff for presentation.
Thank you, Chair Collins. Good evening, Planning Commission. David Goodman, Management Analyst with Community Development. So our agenda for this evening on the Title 24 update is somewhat in response to our last meeting. I'm going to go through in a little more clarity the process for future land use map amendments, and then also review what happened during the docketting process last year. So that will maybe give you just a bit of a refresher for those who were there and a new thing to learn for the people who weren't there, to show how this process has gone in the past and how the process went last year. Then I'll talk a little bit about the changes that we made to the text of Title 24A that were based on the comments that we received from you last meeting. Following that, we'll have our public hearing, and then the Commission will deliberate and ultimately make a recommendation on this topic to the City Council. So I'm going to talk a little bit about the two different types of land use maps that the city uses and try to delineate the process that is related to the comprehensive plan as opposed to the process that goes through the current zoning map. And something to keep in mind as I'm going through this is, this is really the nuts and bolts of what Title 24A is supposed to provide the framework for. So when we talk about Title 24A, essentially what it is, is a framework for going through the process of these land use map changes. So when I'm describing to you what all of this is, just keep in mind that this is actually what we are looking to come up with a new process for in the text of Title 24A. And I'm happy to go backwards or clarify anything because the terminology here can get a little confusing sometimes. So the city, and so I'm going to focus, also I'm going to focus on the land use map amendments, but if you have questions about the text amendment process as well, happy to answer to the best of my ability. So the city has two land use maps that it keeps. The first is the future land use map. And the purpose of the future land use map is to provide a generalized view of how land in the city is intended to be used over a long period of time. So each comprehensive plan looks forward 25 years. And the land use map that's included in the comp plan is meant to be a long-range map. It's adopted as part of the comprehensive plan. And changes to this map require a comprehensive plan amendment. And that's the process that's governed by Title 24 and soon to be Title 24A. The second type of map that the city keeps is the current zoning map. And what the current zoning map is, is the present-day implementation of the future land use map. So the current zoning map is supposed to reflect how the city looks today. It's not adopted as part of the comprehensive plan process. And changes to the current zoning map require a zone reclassification. So future land use map is a comprehensive plan process, and the current zoning map is a zone reclassification process. So to best illustrate this, I'm going to show an example first from our neighbors to the north, Redmond. And I think that showing you how they have sectioned out the future land use map and the current zoning map will help illustrate a little better than Sammamish's situation, which is a little more confusing. So hopefully, after showing this to you, it'll make a little more sense how this works and why the way Sammamish does it is a bit unique. So as you can see there from that clip of the future land use map in Redmond, it's not particularly detailed. You've got large swaths of what they call single-family constrained or single-family urban zones. They also have a multifamily urban zone and some other commercial zones. But it's very general, and there's a range of densities that go into each of those designations. Their current zoning map, on the other hand, is much more specific. So you can see that, for example, single-family urban zones include everything from R4 up all the way to R8. And multifamily urban zones go anywhere from R12 all the way up to R30. And you can also see on the right-hand side there, they have lots of different designations in their, what they call their town square area, their downtown, their downtown zone, excuse me, which include things like town square, et cetera, et cetera. So in this particular case, if somebody wanted to change their zoning from, let's just say, an R4 to an R6, because of the way their future land use map is set up, they could actually bypass the comprehensive plan process entirely and go straight to a zoning map, a zone reclassification, excuse me. Reason being is that a property is already in that single-family urban zone, so they don't need to change anything on the comprehensive plan map. They just have to change something on the current zoning map. So Sammamish, on the other hand, does it a little differently. So again, I've put up two clips here, one of the future land use map and one of the current zoning map. And as you can see, Sammamish uses the exact same designations on the future land use map as they do the current zoning map. So what this means, as you know, is that if somebody wants to change the zoning on their property, unlike in Redmond, in this case, you would have to go through a comprehensive plan amendment process first, if you wanted to, say, switch from R1 to R4. And then you could also do the same thing on the current zoning map. However, the future land use map, as I said, would require a comprehensive plan amendment. And then once, only once that was changed, could you move ahead to the current zoning map change, which would be a zone reclassification. And those are two distinct processes. Title 24 solely focuses on the future land use map process. The zone reclassification process, which applies only to the current zoning map, is a Type III land use action, which means that basically there's a certain set of criteria that an applicant has to show that their proposal meets. The Director of Community Development will make a recommendation based off of his analysis of those, of how well the project meets those criteria. And then it goes to a hearing examiner, and the hearing examiner determines whether to approve the proposal or not. And there's also an appeal process to that. So they're separate processes. They're run completely differently, but they are related in this way. Are there any questions about any of that? So to go back to, just to hammer it home, not to be too on the nose about it, but as mentioned last time, comprehensive plan amendments are legislative decisions that are made at the discretion of the Council. So in other words, there's not really an objective set of criteria that a proposal will say, okay, I meet A, B, C, and D, so therefore, I'm going to get this future land use map amendment. The City Council has a great deal of discretion in terms of whether or not to approve these types of decisions, or whether or not to approve these types of proposals, I should say. And that distinguishes it from other processes like, you know, subdividing or getting avariance or something like that, where there's an objective set of criteria that the city uses to determine whether to approve something or not. And it also distinguishes it from, as I mentioned, the zone reclassification process, which is a hearing examiner-based process where there's already an established way to go about it. So also related to the last meeting, and this will just, again, serve as either a review or some new material that'll provide some context, this is a bit of a detailed summary of the docket process from last year. So as I mentioned, in the early summer, or excuse me, early fall, late summer, the city goes out, went out for application. We did a couple of different pieces of publicity. We received eight applications at the end of September. We took October to review those applications and come up with an initial analysis of what the staff felt were the merits and problems with each of those proposals. Then in late October, early November, the Planning Commission heard those proposed amendments and ultimately voted 5-0 to include all of those items on the 2017 docket, which meant that the Commission said, we want to include all of these proposals to be further analyzed in the following year to determine whether they will ultimately be approved. City Council took that recommendation and had their own deliberation and public hearing. On November 15, the Council was set to determine, to decide on the 2017 docket. They ultimately voted 3-3 on two different combinations of proposals. So that meant that none of them eventually advanced. Then we came back to Council, and in December, the Council voted 7-0 to place two of the city-initiated proposals on the 2017 docket, one of which you will hear about after we're done with Title 24 today, the transportation element. So all that is to say that what we're proposing in Title 24A is fairly similar to what we did last year, and also to give you an idea of the timeline that we were under last year as well. So with all that in the rearview mirror, back to our current draft of Title 24A. In response to the comments from the Commissioners two weeks ago, we moved the definitions section to the beginning rather than the middle, so that people would be able to read all the definitions before seeing the terminology in the middle of explanations and text and things like that. We added two definitions to clarify things for readers, including a definition for the current zoning map and the future land use map, which went over earlier today. We removed a reference to amending the comprehensive plan no more than once per year. That was, a couple of you pointed out, that was a little confusing, and we agreed with that. So we just took it out to avoid any confusion. Although, we still referenced the portion of the Growth Management Act that says that. So it's not completely gone, but it's a bit, should provide a bit more clarity to people. In our, I'll call them non-binding review criteria, we added a reference to neighborhood character, so that when people, when applicants propose a change in zoning, they also have to provide some justification for how the change in zoning won't make their property or their group of properties completely out of character with what's surrounding it. And we also had a number of grammatical and other clarifying fixes that we did. And on that note, I'll add that in the draft that you have, there's a renegade biannual, which should be biennial. So know that we noticed that, and we're on top of it. And so one more request that the Commission had from last time was to provide something of an estimated comprehensive plan proposal review calendar for our proposed two-year review period. Again, it should look pretty similar to what I just showed you from 2016. And in this case, I'm not, I won't read all of it out loud, but suffice it to say that we're proposing taking a little bit more time in between the different steps than we would under an annual process. And I'm happy to go through any of this in a more specific manner. But essentially, we're looking at a July 1 application deadline. The rest of that calendar year would be mostly taken up with initial staff analysis and the Director determining where the proposals might fit in the following two years' work plan. Then in the beginning of the following year, we would conduct the Planning Commission and City Council docket review process, which is that first round of review. The remainder of that year, staff would do some more analysis, depending on which proposals were approved. And we would schedule the dates for the legislative review. Also during that time, applicants would have the opportunity to provide some more information to support their proposal. The year, and the year following, the first half of the year following, we would go through the legislative review process, which is the process in which the Commission and the Council ultimately decide whether to approve, reject, or modify one of the proposals. And at any time during that last legislative review process, a site-specific land use map amendment applicant would have the opportunity to begin that zone reclassification process. So we do, we would allow people to apply concurrently for a change in their current land use zoning as opposed to their, or in addition to their future land use zoning, although, of course, the reclassification would be contingent upon the approval of the change on the future land use map. So that's the end of what I had to present. So the next I have is the public hearing, unless the Commission has any questions on any of that.
I want to thank you for replying to all of our comments in very detailed manner. And thank you also for the timeline. That's very helpful.
Could you go back to that timeline? July 1, 2020, another application deadline will be, will take place, right?
Correct. Yep.
And how does this coincide with the city's budget?
So the budget, the adopted budget would run through 2019 and '20. So the bulk of the review period would occur during that budget year. And the staff review of the applications and the determination on the part of the Director as to whether the staff has adequate time and the department has adequate funds for fully analyzing all of those proposals would be determined as the rest of the budget is also being worked on.
What is the fiscal year? Is it January 1 through December 31st?
I believe it is, yes.
It is? Okay. So your adopted budget, you adopt, you'll adopt the budget to some, before December or before January 1st?
Yes.
Sometime in December?
Yes. The budget is usually adopted November. So in this case, it would be November 2018 for the 19 to '20 cycle.
How does the, so does, I like that the Director basically evaluates the proposals to see if it's going to fit within, you know, staff time, right? And that's, is that a change from recent, past?
It's, I wouldn't say it's, I wouldn't say what the Director does would be a change, but when we do an annual review, it just sort of speeds everything up. So there's, you know, I would say there's a little less flexibility in terms of doing that analysis. We kind of, doing it quickly becomes more of a priority than doing it in a thorough manner, which isn't to say it's impossible to do, but...
It's a three-legged stool, though, right? You just need more resources to get it done quicker, and that becomes problematic exacerb...
And it can bump up against other priorities, things like that.
And everything takes a little bit longer than you think. Yeah, I understand. Why, do you have an idea why Sammamish's future land use map is so specific? Is that, is it so much different? And I can see that being, I'm just curious why it's, why they, it was felt to have it so specific.
So it's been that way since the first, the city's first comprehensive plan in 2003. It's a bit, I can't really speak for why the decision was made back then. So I'm not going to venture a guess, but, so it is what it is. I'm not, I'm not exactly sure why it is that way. And one thing I also wanted to add is that, that is probably unlikely to change until the following comprehensive plan update in 2023.
I guess I could, I can see where it would be kind of one more hoop to jump through. And on the, you know, on the one side of the coin, on the other side of the coin, I'm not sure if there's something else that made that an important thing to have to do, so...
You could argue that doing it in that manner provides essentially an extra layer of protection for changing the land use map. So sort of adds an extra step, you know, some, if you're from the applicant's side, that seems like an extra step. But if you're from the side that, if you're of the perspective that it should be more difficult to change a land use designation, then it would, you would, you know, find that to be a positive. But that being said, I'm not privy to any secret information about why they did that, but that would be my guess.
Actually, one thing I've thought of tonight is if we want to, we could include a recommendation to City Council if we feel it's appropriate that in the next periodic update, they make the land use map, or the future land use map and the current land use map more like the city of Redmond or other cities. If we think that's appropriate this evening, we could, we could make some sort of recommendation to that effect.
Yeah. Not to drag it on, but it would be nice to know, you know, you've kind of shared those two sides of the coin, and it's like, oh, okay, well, makes you look at it a little bit differently. So I don't know if there's any more kind of scratching below the surface in that realm that would help us maybe understand the pros and cons for what we do versus what Redmond does from both sides of the coin, so to speak, not to make the project last a little bit longer.
No. I think it's a worthwhile question to look into, so I can, I can do a little more digging and send you what I find.
I want to, pardon me, ask a quick question about the discretion of the City Council. I know I went after this at our last meeting, and I just can't seem to get past it. So I just want to bring this up again, where I'm concerned, and especially given some of the comments last meeting about people felt they weren't given, they didn't know why that the decision was made, and they didn't even know that it had been made. And I could, I could be wrong in my perception of that. But I am concerned about the lack in this particular document, and it may be elsewhere in the Charter or whatever, the description of the way the City Council performs. But there's, there's no language about decisions being, not being unreasonably, or approval of an application not being unreasonably withheld, or language around decisions not being arbitrary and capricious. And that actually concerns me, because if the intent of this is to provide any kind of clarity or certainty for applicants, I think that needs to be in there somewhere so that the people know what they're getting into and that the, when decisions are being made, there is, on some level, somewhere, a consistent floor. And I also don't see any language in here about, you know, what happens if an application is, you know, it goes in front of the City Council and it is not approved. There's no, there's no real timeline for when an applicant can expect to hear yes or no. And then if it is a yes or no, what the process is for notifying them. And again, and I apologize if that, if that type of information is somewhere else in, you know, in another piece of code.
Those are great comments. So generally, when we meet with, meet with potential applicants who want to submit a proposal for an amendment, we're very upfront and clear with them that the process they're going to undertake may take a lot of time, may involve spending a lot of money on, either in terms of their own time or hiring consultants or whatnot. But there's really no guarantee of anything. And in fact, when we shared that with certain applicants, they decided, okay, thanks for telling us, we're not going to do it then. We're not going to bother. I understand that there's some concern about, they're not, that, you know, your proposal may be rejected for no particular reason or some arbitrary reason. But the truth is that that is the level of the City Council's power when it comes to this process. And the reason that, and the reason that that is, is because the Growth Management Act really tries to push the importance of the general update, which occurs every eight years. And there's a lot of work that goes into that. And the reason that there is, is because that document is supposed to last a full eight years, and it's not really supposed to be tinkered with a whole lot. So, you know, that's why there's this extra high bar to actually get a comprehensive plan amendment through. You know, I think, you know, again, this is something that is usually better addressed sort of on a one-to-one basis rather than in code, but we do explain to people what the process is. We're very clear about it, because, you know, it's also staff time, you know, spent working on these things, and we want to make sure that people understand what they're getting into. You know, so that's a bit why I'm, you know, why we don't include any sort of guarantees about anything. There's also really no appeal process if you get denied. The reason being is that there's no set criteria for whether, again, there's no set criteria that says... that says if you meet these criteria, then you're automatically in. That just doesn't exist with this process. And that's just, I mean, that's not something that the city of Sammamish invented. That's just the way that the Growth Management Act is set up.
I was, on the following up on that, on page five of five, but it's under processes. The planning commission shall review, then the city council shall review the planning commission's recommendations. And then the last part of the V is the city council may deny, approve, or modify the planning commission's recommendation. And that, to me, you know, it looks like it's, something's going to happen because we got shells up to there. And then it may be the discretion of the city council to deny, approve, or modify.
And Commissioner Petrus, I also just want to follow up on, on the group here, the last, last meeting. The reason that the city council did not approve any of the site-specific land use map amendment proposals was that they wanted a more higher-level discussion to be had about upzoning from R1 to R4 before they made any decisions on, on proposals like that. And in fact, we're going to counsel with that on Monday. We're going to be talking about R1 and what the different reasons for the existence of R1 are and some of the issues related to changing those zoning designations. So, that was the council's reasoning last year.
Are there any other questions before I open the public hearing?
I just have one comment about the comprehensive plan in general. I read, as a result of the work that we have coming up here on the transportation element, the volume one, Goals and Policies introduction includes a description of procedures for amendments. Have you seen, are those going to be changed?
I'm actually not, I'm not aware of that, but if they are, you know, if, if what they are.
It's pretty detailed.
Okay.
Just for, for your reference, it's volume one, Goals and Policies, introduction, page 20 to 21. And it, under A dot three, it's pretty detailed and probably doesn't correspond with what we're doing here.
I will certainly look into that. Thank you for, thank you for pointing that out.
Commissioner Anderson, is that for the transportation element specifically or for the?
It's for, it's for amendments to the comprehensive plan.
Oh. Interesting. Okay. Let's take a look at that.
Absolutely.
Excuse me. Okay, so, we will open the public hearing. Public hearing is now open. And I would like the list of folks who'd like to speak this evening.
[inaudible]
Oh, well, then, you can start, Mr. Stickney. So, public comment during the public hearing will be seven minutes for each person who'd like to speak.
Good evening, Planning Commission. My name, Paul Stickney. I'm at 504-228 AV Southeast. And I've handed out, for the record and for you, three different things. One is my, my comments, questions, and suggestions about chapter or title 24. And, and second is a handy copy of the GMA 14 Planning Goals and a copy of the GMA Code about what elements are mandatory in a comp plan. So, my comments are more holistic and broad and not citing a specific sentence in the staff's 24A changes. But one question in staff letter, it talks about changes to a future land use zoning or a small group. I think we ought to say how small is small because small could be 60 or 100 acres to some people. And small could be five or, you know, 10 acres to someone else. I think that would be a good thing to have a little more clarity on how small is small. Also, in the staff letter, I saw something that I'd like to comment on and suggest it be in chapter 24. And that would explain what elements of the comp plan were mandatory from the state and what elements were optional that, that Sammamish chose to do. Because I think a lot of citizens would be very impressed that Sammamish chose to do the environment and conservation element. It isn't mandatory. And Sammamish chose to do a shoreline element. That is one of the 14 goals, but it's not a mandatory element. And our citizens, as the kings, we, would be very impressed to know that we have taken those on and done a very good job at those. And also, we've added sustainability and health throughout the entire comp plan. So, I think this is an opportunity to piggyback on what Commissioner Anderson was mentioning, where all the goals in the introduction section are listed in one place. I think here, it would be kind of cool just to state what are the elements of the comp plan, which ones were mandatory and which ones were optional. And that is my recommendation on that. In my third comment is, I can't remember what staff said, so I'm not challenging, I'm questioning. How many peer cities were looked at and how many are on a, a two-year cycle? It, it is my opinion, not fact, that very few peer cities are on a, you know, two-year cycle. And the GMA does make public involvement as one of those 14 goals for the planning section, one of the hallmarks of the GMA. So, it seems to me that going to a two-and-a-half-year cycle is counterproductive to public involvement in the comp plan. On topic number four, I appreciate seeing the eight items that were turned in for last year, but I really think it would help inform your decision whether you go on a two-and-a-half year cycle or stay with the current roughly one-and-a-half-year cycle, to know how many comp plan requests were there per year from 2003 till now, not just last year. I think that would inform that, that choice. And then, how many of those were, you know, proposed by the city? And how many of those were by individuals? And of those, you know, proposed by individuals, how many did the council put on the docket? And I think that would be real good information to help judge the, the merits of whether you go with a longer two-and-a-half-year period or stay with the current cycle. In the spirit of what's right, not who's right, on item five, there is a future land use map. That is correct on page 33 of the land use element, but it is incorrect that zoning and land use are not a part of our current comp plan because they are. Yeah, on the land use background elements on page six and 12, which is a part of the comp plan, we have zoning and, and the land use, you know, precisely, current. So, so those are a part of the comp plan. And since they're the same, I agree with some of what Commissioner Collins was saying is, since they are for now identical or near identical in Sammamish, it may be wise to leave the, the plan on the one-and-a-half-year cycle until those two things are different. That's just my suggestion. On the, on topic number six, these changes in title 24 allow the city to make substantive changes to the comp plan, but do not allow citizens to make substantive changes to comp plan. I believe in what's good for the goose is good for the gander. And I think that either should be able to do substantive comp plan changes or neither. That is my recommendation. Then, number seven, number eight, and number nine, I'll kind of summarize because I think I'm running out of time. We currently have a plan where we take the dockets in by September. Again, the kings, we, the queens, we, with we. We take in the dockets by September of a year. It's kind of fast and furious and the council makes a decision by roughly December and then has to work on it a year. That is a bit tough. Maybe we start a process where we start advertising in June and have the dockets in by July of a year. That way, staff would have all of August, which is the council and commission break and not quite as hectic, to evaluate those, those, you know, proposals. And that would give then council and planning commission, September, October, November, December, to make a decision whether it goes on the docket or not. And then, if it did, there'd be a decision by the end of the year. So, I gave a little example in number seven. So, the staff recommendation is basically a two-and-a-half-year process and, and my suggestion is a one-and-a-half year. That's it.
Thank you for your comment. Ms. Victor?
It looks like.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is John Cunningham. My address is 2400 Gold Creek Court Southwest in Tumwater, Washington. I'm actually here for the transportation item, but hearing the question from the commissioner about the, perhaps the reason for the maps being the same. Back when the, the planning advisory board was doing the first comprehensive plan, I was the public works director here at the city of Sammamish. And my recollection is, the reason, one of the main reasons that Sammamish Incorporated was because of the perception of sort of rampant, uncontrolled growth in this area when, when it was in the county. And so, the planning advisory board, I think, made the conscious decision to make the maps the same so that the city knew exactly what they were going to get from a zoning standpoint, from a growth standpoint. It was kind of a reaction to, to sort of the main reason that, that the city incorporated in the first place. So, I don't think they wanted to leave any ambiguity as to whether it was going to be R1 or R4 or R6 or R8. They wanted to be very specific as to what the growth was going to look like in the city.
Thank you. That's very valuable.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Mary Victor and I live at 408-208th Avenue Northeast. I had comments, I think you heard from a lot of public at your last meeting, and I know there's another public meeting going on tonight. I think it would be worthwhile to go back and look at some of those comments and see if they apply, even though they're not given at the public hearing here, including my own testimony, which I didn't have time to listen to. I did want to thank the other people for speaking and I pretty much agree with the things they said. I also want to note, the city was formed in 1999. The first comp plan was 2003. The second comp plan was worked on from 2012 to 2015. So, that was 12 years. The first time a docket was allowed was last year and pretty much nothing from the citizens was allowed, even small, tiny changes. And then you're talking about going to a year and a half to two and a half years. I mean, you're, you're going a really long time from 2012 to 2018 before even a person can submit a change. So, I'm not for the two-year cycle. I don't think other cities do it and I think you need to be more flexible. Let me give some examples. I said last meeting, I think there should be an errata sheet. Like when we adopted the stormwater from King County, as soon as King County adopted their stormwater in 2016 on Earth Day, there was an errata sheet that came up. So, if there's errors, missing, fixes, corrections, those can be put on. So, for example, one of the maps in the comp plan, it says natural or environmental features. It doesn't have a legend. It's missing a legend. Shows steep slopes, but you wouldn't know that because there's no legend. It was taken from another thing. That should be able to be fixed. It shouldn't take five, six, eight years to fix that. There was also landslide hazard areas where totally left off, those should be added in if erosion was added in. I put in that change. There was even a council member that said, can't we just change the map? And the answer is no, you have to go through the whole comp plan thing. Sometimes they're just missing info or info that needs to change. For example, I believe there was a trails, bikeways, pathways, which I might add that backwards. That's been changed into non-motorized. That was its own thing, separate from parks and transportation. That's now been moved to be with transportation. They're doing the transportation update. Hopefully, that naming would get in because if you read the comp plan and you haven't followed two years worth of city meetings, you don't know what this is referring to anymore because the names have changed. So, I think just simply having an errata sheet so you know what is changed that could easily be folded in would be great. Like I wouldn't have had to actually submit my map change if I knew the city was going to include that in their stormwater, but I have to apply in the same period they did. There is none of that, so I have to go through the process of putting in and maybe paying money to fix an error. It didn't get accepted. I don't know if it'll get fixed, but stormwater stuff is. So, it's very scrabbling. Like I said, it's already been 2012 to 2017 that you haven't been able to make any changes. You don't get in the docket now. We have to wait another two years. It just, it seems to me that you're, you're not allowing any changes to be made at all. So, I would suggest, as a computer programmer in my former life, what's the longest window that would happen before a change could be made? And what's the shortest window that would happen before a change could be made? And then somewhere in there, people are going to do it. Like if you just missed it by one day, how long would it be? And I think you have to look at that because I think your windows are way too long right now. I would also, I understand the city is going to look at the R1, R4, or other things and it is coming up. And I think that was in response to the docket items that weren't accepted last fall, so I'm glad they're looking at that. But if the city does want to make a change, they have to change their future land use map, which is not currently a docket item. And then they'd also have to change their zoning map. So, how long would it even take for the city to make a zoning change? So, I think a lot of times we're creating code and we're trying to get good concepts, but the user or the user use of it isn't being thought out and the timeframes aren't thought out. So, that's why you've seen me at the planning commission with a lot of photos and a lot of input because I did usability testing and user interface testing and I have a computer science background with extremely large systems that are extremely complex. And I don't think you're doing the testing on the code. So, you'll hear at the city council, oh, there were these unintended consequences. Those happened because you're not, you're not taking, like even for this meeting today, they took commission suggestions, but they didn't take public suggestions from the last meeting. So, we're here at the public hearing, but those people who gave suggestions aren't here. So, I think you're missing the user feedback loop. And if you do things well, the earlier you take feedback and the more you integrate it, the better system you have and it costs you less to change it later. That's a, a system from like the 1970s, 80s that we talked about when I was first a programmer. So, those are my suggestions. I think a lot of the things I covered, I covered in different detail last meeting, so I've tried to cover those tonight. I've been traveling for work, so I didn't have a lot of prep time. But seriously, at least do the errata sheet. The errata sheet lets you catch the little things, the tiny things, the things that were renamed or just make it easier for people to read because the comp plan is your guiding light. And in order to be able to read your guiding light, you have to be able to speak in the language and definitions and names. And if those names have changed, like if the, the northern version of the Monahan Sub Basin is now called the Zaccoose Sub Basin, you want to make sure you call it that and document that this was changed under this ordinance or regulation or whatever. And then that way, people can see how it's done. So, if you're reading it and things aren't meeting up, you could look back to the errata sheet, find out what changed in the last one, two, three, five, eight years, and it would make sense to you. And you can do that for King County Stormwater. I did that a lot, reading thousands of pages of code for stormwater last year. And I would seriously consider that the, the city accept that. And the other final thing is I think Doug McIntyre was here at the last meeting. He said the future land use map should really say, this is commercial, this is residential, this is urban or whatever. Or the zoning map actually says the R1, R4, R6, R8, maybe there's even an R2 that we need to consider for our city. I really think they should be made different. I think you're hurting yourself keeping them the same. I don't see the benefit to that. And I think it just makes a lot more use planning-wise. I, I do commission meetings for other cities in other states and they have like a, a 2020 plan or a 2040 plan. And they do generalized maps and then specific maps. I don't think it makes sense to have two specific maps exactly the same and you have to jump through two hoops to do it. It just, it doesn't seem particularly good, especially since it's taken us so long to get the first comp plan. It's terribly long to build the second comp plan and then you're not allowing docket changes. So, hopefully, I wasn't too wordy there. I didn't have a lot of time to prepare, but I did read this stuff online. And I think what you're doing is very important for the city and for the citizens who give input and might be impacted by the changes, either positively or negatively. So, thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you for your comment. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak this evening? Is there anyone else who'd like to speak this evening? Okay. With that, I'm going to close the public hearing. And I'll open it up one more time for questions, because I do have a few questions based on public comment. That's right. Mr. Stickney brought up a good point about which other cities are on a two-year process, and I thought Mr. McIntyre had addressed that last time. He had mentioned two other cities. I can't remember what they were.
I'm not sure I have the same recollection. And I'm not sure which other cities uses a two-year process.
Okay. Was it Charline and Boffel? They both have, I think that's what, I'm pretty sure that's what Mr. McIntyre said. Okay. The other question I have, which is also related to Mr. Stickney's comment, was, do we have any idea of how many applications per year that we've seen?
So before 2016, I think the last year that a docket was opened was either 2013, I think 2013. I think generally, you get less than 10 applications a year, something like four to six usually, just based on my own, my own look at prior years.
And some of those are city applications, like text amendments and
Right.
updates to certain elements of the comprehensive plan?
Yes, it's usually a mix of city-initiated proposals and citizen-initiated proposals.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any other questions?
I'm just curious about economies of scale, and/or kind of on the reverse side of that, if, you know, maybe what we're driving at by this information about the number of applications, would it necessarily end up with this kind of glut that if it was shoved to a two-year cycle, that might be more difficult to overcome? Or is there an economy of scale in that you can kind of, you know, layer on and take care of more things at one time? Would be interesting to know from that point of view. It was also, I like the idea of this errata sheet, or some, you know, some way to make small changes more often, or, and maybe this errata sheet is an idea, I guess that would be like an unofficial change, or changes that are maybe unofficial, or so to speak, until they get, or is it just the errata to help keep up with changes in code that are referred to within the document? And then at the normal times, it would get updated with those changes? Is that kind of the thought?
So, you know, I think anybody is welcome to contact the city if they see something that seems off or is incorrect. But the, you know, the reason we do it this way is because the Growth Management Act is very specific that you may only, with a couple exceptions, you may only update the document once per year. So essentially, what that means is, even if you've got three different items that you're looking to change, you can, you can only, you can make those items, you can change those items, you have to change them all at once. You can't sort of do it three separate times throughout the year. So, for example, with the transportation element we're working on, that'll get wrapped up, but we won't be able to officially change it until the other item also gets wrapped up and we can change it together. You know, even if we go with the two-year process, we are still allowed under the GMA to update once a year. So if there were, you know, I imagine if there were a series of corrections that the council and the commission felt were important enough to go ahead and change, that in the intermediate year, we might be able to make those changes. But really, the document is not, as I apologize if I sound like a broken record, but the document is not supposed to be changed all the time. Part of its power comes from the fact that it's supposed to be a longer-range document. Now, of course, that doesn't mean it's impossible for there to be typos in it or something like that, but, you know, the process for editing it is supposed to be taken, you know, very judiciously.
I think if the land use map and the zoning map are the same, that's not very good. I would really like to have the land use map be a goal, what we're trying to achieve. It ought to be exciting. It ought to be something to guide you, something that staff can look at and say, that's what we want. I could see why you couldn't make up your minds, and it would take a long time if you looked at a land use map and it looked like the zoning map. I think that's so wrong. I would, you're missing the opportunity to have this, something inspirational in front of you for our city that is, that can drive you down the right path to something exciting. I think that that's very important. There was another, I think the errata sheet for these small changes, if that could be done, then why not do that every, you can do that three times in a year?
So, again, with a couple exceptions, you can only make changes to the comprehensive plan once per year.
I don't know why you wouldn't implement the errata sheet. And if you, and not make the changes to the plan, but have it here on record for your own use.
I think if we want to include an errata sheet, then during our deliberation this evening, we could, we can make an amendment to the code to add an errata sheet. But I'm actually not sure that it would even be legal, does staff know that it would be legal to have an errata sheet?
So there is a portion of the GMA that, and I'm trying to find it here, that, I'm not going, I'm not going to be able to find it, but that I believe it says that there should be a process by which citizens can submit comments or suggestions or anything like that, that don't go to the level of a full application, but that are more, I think more to, of the type that you're referring to. And I'm, because I can't find it, I also can't confirm that there's a reference to it in the draft that we have, but it is something that is mentioned in the GMA, and we can, if the commission wishes, we can make a little more explicit.
If we want to during the process tonight, Commissioner Garrison, if you want to make an amendment to the code, that would be the appropriate time?
Right now?
No.
After we start a recommendation.
With the chair's permission, maybe it would be good to move to the motion for we can have the deliberation and amendments.
So with that in mind, and I hope I can get my acronym right, but I move to approve the recommendation to the Sammamish Municipal Code Title 24A text as presented to the Planning Commission this evening.
We need a second for deliberation.
I second.
So we'll open it up for deliberation or amendments.
Well, I just want to understand this idea of errata. And if, so if there is, if there's a reference to Code A in the, in the comp plan, and the Code A gets rewritten and gets renamed outside of the comp plan, then suddenly, the comp plan is referencing something that doesn't exist. And so that errata could deal with that, kind of remake that connection, without having to go back into the comp plan and change that word in there, whether it's misspelled or calling something A when it's now called A1. Would that serve that purpose? I don't want to suggest that we do something that's not going to get us where we want to go.
We could certainly, I mean, there's nothing stopping us from doing this now, have an option for people to email and say, hey, this is a non-substantive error that I think needs to be changed. But again, we're limited in the number of times that we can make edits to the comprehensive plan. And, you know, I, we don't have a member of our legal team here, but I don't know if, even if, even if you just want to change an A to an E, if, I don't know that you can do that without going through a process, public process, through city council and such.
And only eight of those would be allowed. Changing A to E is one.
Oh, you can have, you can do as many as you want.
It could be infinite, it just has to be at the same time.
It just has to be at the same time, yeah.
Is that the idea of the text amendment, actually? The text amendment is sort of a lower amendment rather than a full land use amendment?
It's just different. A text amendment could be either a chain, I mean, you're generally advised against changing a policy, or like substantively changing a goal or a policy, but, you know, for example, the transportation element that we're working on tonight is a text amendment, and that's fairly, still fairly substantial. You know, and another related issue to this, you know, to what's been brought up here is that we also, and we try to do this in writing code as well, is try to write the comprehensive plan in such a way that we don't have to keep going back and updating the names, for example, the names of things, or certain numbers, or things like that. Really try to make it stand the test of time and have those dynamic references where, even if, you know, if the code, if, excuse me, if the comp plan references RCW-80, and then RCW-80 changes somehow, we don't have to go back and fix the comp plan, it's just the reference, the reference is the same, but the content in that reference is different.
Would you please, though, go and look at the process that you referenced in the, for doing those non-substantive error corrections? You know, if you see there's a reference in the plan, if you would please look at that, because it is super intriguing.
Yes, and I think, I'm sorry, I can't find it immediately, but I believe what it refers to is that there's just a process for citizen comments and things like that for the city to take into account when reviewing the comprehensive plan.
Okay. Other thoughts? Changes, suggested changes?
Well, I'm just wondering, at the last process, we did hear from citizens, and I don't want this to come off real critical, but why weren't some of these suggested amendments and changes by the citizens considered?
Could you be a little more specific, which ones you're referring to?
Well, some of the things Ms. Victor talked about, bringing forward in her docket request, was, isn't there some ability to move it maybe from a citizen action to you looking more thoroughly at, at an amendment request like hers, instead of it wholly just disappearing? It's hard to articulate, but I almost feel like we're not listening to the public for certain amendment requests, and they're just disappearing.
Well, you know, the commission did approve it, did recommend that it be part of the docket, and the, you know, the council ultimately did not include it in their, in their group of amendments. So I can't really provide an explanation as to why that's part of this, again, part of this process. I realize it's disappointing to some people that there's not some, you know, there's not some appeal process, or there's not some golden rule by which a yes or a no is given. It's just a council, it's just a council decision, and they have the right to, you know, decide based on whatever criteria they want.
And I just wonder if staff representing an amendment has more weight? Because certainly, the ones that we're looking at came from staff.
Well, you know, I'll point out that two of the other city-initiated amendments did not make it to the, to this round either, so it's not, you know, it's not a guarantee. I mean, I guess I don't, I wish I, I don't really have a, an answer besides to say that it's
Yeah, I know. It's more a statement, I guess, is that I am sensitive to the fact that we have a public very engaged, and people who want to help the city. And I think we need more of an outreach, more of a collaborative work with the public for some of the amendments. That's just the feeling I get from the feedback. And this is a new process for us. We're still a relatively new city. The comp plan's new. We're kind of new to all this. And I think it would be a good statement for our citizens, for our community, to know that we can work in partnership.
I agree.
So I'll start on kind of a big one. Although I'm very appreciative of staff's work, and I think they did a great job putting this together, I am not in favor of the biennial process. I'm in favor of the annual process, and I will state the reasons why. I think because there's no appeals process, it's difficult for the folks who, you know, did not get to move forward to the legislative review process, if they had had to, if they have to wait another two years, that does seem like a burden. Also, when we have a new city council next year, with, I think it's either three or four new city council members, it would seem appropriate for them to be able to review new applications if they came forward in that year, and for them not to have to wait two full years to review those applications. And I believe there was an application on the docket for an R12 piece of property that the applicant was requesting to be changed to neighborhood business. And I think it was in the gateway to the city where Issaquah Falls City and Issaquah Pine Lake intersect. And I thought that was such a great proposal and such a great opportunity for the city to be able to use that parcel for open space, and to also save the beautiful trees that are on that piece of property. And so if that applicant decided to apply again, I would want them to apply sooner than later, and I would want them to have that opportunity. And so I just wanted to show the opposite side of the situation. I know we're very sensitive to upzoning, you know, going R1 to R4, R6, but we also need to have space and room to do other, other changes that might benefit the city in a different way. So I'll open that up for discussion, and then I can make a formal amendment. If there's anyone else who wants to speak on this topic, they can right now.
I agree with the chair. The fact that the city can go forward with annual amendments is not helpful. So I'd say that I'd support your amendment.
I also will support the amendment to keep it at one year.
I, at first, was agreeing with the chair and the amendment to the motion I made, but I started to think about some of the things that we've heard from the public in some other areas where the city may be moving too quickly, and many too fast. And it's not so much worrisome, but there may be a movement to slow down growth within the city. And this will affect a lot of things that happen, and I'd like to see, not to add more work to staff, but to, you know, maybe get this done before we can move forward, whether it's two-year or one-year. I think we need to get this to city council so they can look at it. And if they see, maybe they want, you know, whatever timeline, so that's all.
Yeah, it seems like there's, like everything, there's good and bad for the one and the two-year thing, and it ultimately kind of comes out to which bucket has the most kind of beans in it, or whatever you want to say. And so, you know, there's this budget cycle notion, there's these other kind of rubber-hits-the-road components that are kind of easy to overlook, and I don't feel like I know enough about that kind of level, and I don't know that I need to know about enough of that kind of level to really make a firm recommendation one way or the other. A lot of it has, I mean, I appreciate the fact that the, it does kind of string stuff out to a process that's already kind of long. And if there's some way to strike some balance there to where you can kind of pare down that which we're trying to deal with to kind of a subdivision of simpler things and more substantive things, and maybe that could be a middle ground. Likely would cause it to be a little more complex of a flow chart for you guys. I don't know. Mary Victor speaks of, you know, that kind of a computer technology, or a computer kind of way of looking at it. Maybe there's some, maybe there's some benefit of looking at it that way. I don't know. Did you take any Taking these really complex things and trying to squeeze stuff out of it, but I don't know. I'll be quiet now.
Well, I'll go ahead and I'll make a motion to amend the Title 24A to go to an annual process instead of a biennial process.
Should we call for the question and vote on the amendment, then?
Yeah.
Then I call for the question of voting on the amendment?
Did we need a second? Or is that the second?
I'll second it.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah.
Okay. So all those in favor of amending Title 24A to an annual process instead of a biennial process, say aye.
Aye.
And all those opposed, say no?
No.
No.
And Mr. Petrich, I'm sorry, did you?
Aye.
Yours was aye?
Yeah.
Okay, so the men would carry for two this evening?
Whatever happened to the discussion of the errata sheet? I mean, it seems like we stood, there was a proposed amendment, and then it never went anywhere.
All I need is an actual motion. You can, you can make a motion to include an errata sheet.
Like, to make a motion to include, include some sort of a process for reviewing non-substantive teensy errors that are annoying or confusing.
I'll second that.
Well, did we vote on the main motion?
Not yet.
No, so that allows for further amendments.
And Commissioner Petrich's motion would, just to say appropriately, is that you would like to make a motion to amend Title 24. But just pretend you already said that.
Okay.
So let's go ahead and vote on that if there's a second. Did we have a second?
Yes.
Okay. And all those in favor, I think I seconded it. All those in favor of including an errata sheet, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say no? So we'll include that errata sheet, and the vote was 6-0. Vice Chair, you got to keep track of these amendments. Okay, so the first amendment is the manual...
May I just, I'm sorry, Chair Collins, may I just clarify on, so what you're requesting is a process by which citizens can submit items that they feel are non-substantive but still need to be changed?
Exactly.
Yeah, whatever is consistent with the comprehensive plan.
And I also just want to be clear that...
Except for legal.
Yes. But I also just want to be clear that those changes would only be able to be made in conjunction with all the other changes with the comprehensive plan. So they wouldn't be able to be changed in a week, like, you know.
I would think the errata sheet would be like one amendment. Say you had an errata sheet that had 10 things on it, and maybe there were 10 very small things, but that would look like one amendment that was part of the process to do all the amendments. That's how I would see it. Yeah.
Right, and I also just want to clarify that I will include that in the recommendation, but that it will be subject to whatever the rules and regulations, you know, are allowed, what processes are allowed under the GMA.
Excellent.
Since we've had two amendments, I will again call for the question of the main motion as amended.
Can I ask if there's any, if there are any other amendments first? Yes, then I'll second that. Or you're calling the question, so that means we need to vote? Okay, all those in favor of the motion to approve recommendation of SMC Title 24A text as presented to Planning Commission with the following amendments. The first amendment is to change the process from an annual process to a biennial process. And the second amendment is to include an errata sheet process that would allow the, or would, subject to the regulations, or whoever makes, the GMA's regulations.
I actually think you got the first one backwards. We're trying to go from biennial to annual?
Oh, sorry about that. Okay, you're right. It is biennial, change it to annual. Sorry about that. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed, say no?
No.
Okay, and the motion carries for two. Thank you, Larry. Okay. So I think that's all we have for this evening. And I do want to make one point about changing it from a biennial to an annual process. I had spoke with the director about my concerns, and he did say that it would take, it would take some work to make a change because it is such a significant change. So we'll, of course, let staff have the time that they need to make that change. Okay, so I think that item is over. So now we will move to the transportation element.
Thank you for your efforts tonight there.
Good evening, Commission. I suppose I should have brought a different tie I could wear for this one, but I'm here, I'm here as a substitute for Doug McIntyre, who's on a well-deserved vacation. And I'm just going to introduce this item this evening, and then I'm going to leave it to the experts to take you through it. So this, as you remember from three minutes ago, this is, this is the first of the two docket proposals that were approved by city council last December. This is an amendment proposal for the transportation element of the comprehensive plan. This is also an element that the commission recommended be placed on the docket last fall. And so we're going to have two, I think, two meetings with you on this topic this month, and then the city council will review your recommendation and deliberate further next month. So as I mentioned, the Planning Commission's role is to review this amendment as well as the, as well as the public works element that will be coming later this year. On December 6, this item was included in Resolution 709, passed by the city council, that included it on their docket list. So essentially, this is the second step in the two-step process. So rather than just looking at it based on staff availability and overall appropriateness for this process, this step of the process, you're actually going to be deliberating on whether to approve the suggested changes. So as I mentioned, you'll have a work session today. And then in two weeks, on June 15, there will be a public hearing, followed by a deliberation and a recommendation. So just a brief overview of the review criteria that you should be thinking about for this element. I won't read every word of it, but, and the experts here will have more specific things to say about each one of these. But suffice it to say, just to summarize, these review criteria include considering what is proposed to be changed and why, the anticipated impacts of the change, why the current comprehensive plan guidance no longer applies or should not continue, making sure that the proposal complies with the Growth Management Act, thinking about how the amendment complies with the SAMAMISH vision statement, which is included in the comprehensive plan, and thinking about how functional plans and capital improvement programs support the change. So I will now turn it over to John. Yep.
Good evening, Commissioners. Again, my name's John Cunningham with JA Cunningham Consulting. Was hired by the city to sort of manage this particular request through the process. It actually got started back when I was here doing an interim Public Works Director stint back in 2015 and early 2016 for the city. And with me tonight is Victor Selman, who's with Transportation Solutions Incorporated. And he was actually one of the original authors of the transportation element of the comprehensive plan clear back in 2003. So he was involved in the development of the city's current concurrency program, the current, setting of the city's current levels of service standards for intersections and roadway segments. And so he was brought on to help with this particular amendment to the comprehensive plan. As we get started, one of the things I'd like to mention right up front is that, as David mentioned, this is really a text amendment. We are not proposing to change any policies or any goals in the transportation element of the comprehensive plan or any other element of the comprehensive plan. Those will be tackled, if there are going to be any changes in those, those will be a part of the upcoming transportation master plan that the city has embarked on. They, the city made the decision to do that partway through this, this particular effort. So this effort is really just kind of focused on bringing the transportation element of the comprehensive plan, and particularly that as it relates to the concurrency program, bringing that up to date, particularly with the annexation of the Kohani area to the city. When the Kohani area was annexed into the city, that brought in Isquah Falls City Road, which is a major arterial for the city in need of improvement. And it was not a part of the concurrency program before because it was outside the city. But with the annexation, it is in the city, and so we needed to update the comprehensive plan to include that. And then as part of that, we decided we would go ahead and update the traffic counts. The previous 2015 version of the comprehensive plan has 2012 and 2014 traffic counts in it. And we, this time around, what we did is we did new counts in 2016 and did all of the analysis based on those new traffic counts. So let's see. Part of what we're doing in the, in the update is we're updating the concurrency project list. What that is, is the projects within the, within the city, or the roadway segments or intersections within the city that fail the current level of service standard based on the 2016 traffic counts and the updated 2035 traffic model. The next step after this is done will be to update the city's traffic impact fee, which is the fee that development, new development pays for their fair share of improving the city's transportation system. As I mentioned, it includes the recently annexed Kohani area, or incorporating the update dated data from the city's traffic model, using the May 26 traffic counts as sort of the base of that, including the fact that the city has installed an adaptive traffic signal system along 228th, the 228th Avenue corridor. We also accounted for any new development that occurred, had occurred since 2012. So it accounts for any new traffic counts based on the development that has occurred from May of 2012, when the traffic counts were taken then, to May of 2016, to when the new traffic counts were taken. And then some other minor kinds of changes to make, to make things consistent throughout the, throughout the document. What are the anticipated impacts of the proposed amendment? It results in an updated list of transportation projects that need to be done in order to resolve intersection or roadway segment level of service failures from a concurrency standpoint. And these will all occur, of course, within the city limits, including the recently annexed area of Kohani. The existing comprehensive plan guidance should no longer continue in effect. Well, because, number one, it doesn't include all of the city, referring to Kohani. And also the traffic counts, because we used 2012 and 2014 traffic counts in the previous version, in the 2015 adopted version, there's a little bit of inconsistency there. And so with the 2016 counts, that all becomes, becomes more consistent and allows the level of service analysis to be a bit more detailed. The next justification item that David talked about, proposed amendment complies with Growth Management Act by analyzing the city's future transportation system deficiencies against the city's current adopted level of service standards. So there's no change in those level of service standards proposed with this, with this amendment to the comprehensive plan. Again, if there are any of those that are going to be made, they'll be made as a result of all the work that's done on the upcoming transportation master plan. And by analyzing the future transportation system needs based on the projected growth anticipated in the comprehensive plan's land use chapter for the next 20 years or so. How does the proposed amendment comply with the vision statement for SAMAMISH? It utilizes, again, the city's current adopted level of service standards, which encourage multimodal transportation network, complies with the existing transportation level of service standards, providing for a safe transportation system for all users. Utilizes, again, the currently adopted transportation standards in order to achieve the most efficient use of the city's transportation infrastructure, and continues to utilize the city's growth pays for growth philosophy for calculating an updated traffic impact fee for the city. Finally, the city's functional plans and capital improvement programs will support the revisions of the proposed amendment by including the recommended transportation projects in the city's future six-year transportation improvement programs. The annual update for that is probably being worked on by the city right now for adoption by the city council in June or July of this year, including the recommended transportation projects in the city's 20-year capital needs analysis. So when that's updated by the, by the city, the recommended projects will be included in that. And then coordinating the recommended projects with all of the other city planning initiatives that are going on now, including the Non-Motorized Plan, the Trails, Bike Ways, and Pathways Plan, the Transportation Master Plan, and the Traffic Impact Fee update. And I think that is the end of this presentation, and we'll have David go through this again at the, at the end. So I think we're ready for any questions that you have on the proposed amendment.
I guess I have a question, and I'll beat Larry to it. You seem to be talking about a lot more than just text changes. Didn't I hear you say we were just going to discuss text change, changes tonight?
I think that the word text in this, in this usage really refers to the fact that it's just some data and verbiage changes. There's no policy changes, there's no goal changes, there's no vision changes. All of the existing goals and policies and visions that are in the comprehensive plan, the city's existing standards, all of those are in place. And so it's a matter of updating the data that was used to calculate the level of service deficiencies. And I think that's why we refer to that as a text amendment as opposed to a goal or a policy amendment.
Right, but what you just went through with us was all goal and policy. Isn't that correct?
No, it's not. It's based on the city's current goals. I mean, what I, what I went through on the slides was to show that the amendment does indeed meet the requirements of the, that you have to go through for meeting the requirements to amend the comprehensive plan under the Growth Management Act.
Mr. Cunningham, maybe you could give an example of something that would be a goal and policy, so that we could see the, sorry to put you on the spot that way, but...
Yeah.
That might help, that might help.
We actually don't have, we don't have those with us. We're dealing with just the transfer, the background information chapter of the, of the comprehensive plan versus the goals and policies element of the, of the plan.
The specific policies that would be impacted by work in this section are the level of service standards. And essentially, what this technical correction is doing is looking at, you have a level of service standard or a capacity for various roadway classifications. We basically did a new forecast of traffic conditions to see if you would still meet those standards based on the new information. So based on the 2016 counts that we collected... So based on the 2016 counts that we collected, based on knowing a lot more about how town center is likely to develop than we knew in 2013 and 2014, we were able to do a better forecast of 2035. And so this exercise was really to check, is that project list that we're going to recommend substantially the same, but using all those same goals and criteria? That the maximum capacity of a three-lane principal arterial is 30,000-something vehicles per day, a minor is less. So that's why it looks like a tremendous amount of work. It is a function of all those numbers changing, of traffic patterns having changed since 2012 and 2014. But again, the goal of this was to see, is that capital facilities plan, the projects necessary to maintain your adopted level of service different than it would have been or than it was when we calculated it back in 2015? And what we found is not significantly different. The Issaquah Falls City Road segments that were not in the city, that kind of everyone knew were substandard before, you know, they popped up as failures that need to be corrected. And then the existing transportation network in Cloughane, those arterials passed the city's current level of service standards. So that was another question, is we annexed something, do its facilities meet our level of service standards? So we did those traffic counts and forecasts and said, yes, those streets meet your current standards, even though they were designed to an older King County standard. So that was, all those numbers you see are really a function of the traffic model generating a new volume for every segment and every intersection in the city, and us calculating, does it meet that standard you already adopted in 2015? And the answer generally is, yes, there's a few minor changes here and there, but we don't see a huge change in the project list that would be necessary to achieve concurrency.
I have a question about, I just think what I need to understand is how the intersections outside of the city limits are, they're obviously not addressed in this, sort of by definition, but everybody in the city, or most people in the city, will eventually leave. A lot of them go down an intersection of, they'll intersect with highway or State Route 202. So is that, that issue of those, there's those three terrible intersections, is that going to be dealt with in the master plan discussion? Or is that something that we can talk about tonight? The language in this piece, it's sort of, there's a couple of references to our need to coordinate, continue to coordinate with Redmond and King County. Can we beef that up in this, or does that happen later?
There are policies in the goals and policy section that talk about how you would coordinate that. So that's maybe, that's more of a policy change if you wanted to put more effort into making improvements outside the city. In terms of operationally, the travel demand model that you have, we did count those external intersections. Those bottlenecks do influence where traffic comes in and out of Sammamish. So one of the things we noticed is, after counting and calibrating, we saw some shifts in volumes from Sahali Way to East Lake Sammamish Parkway. Every time we count, that traffic flops back and forth as one route, as 202, Sahali, you know, gets busier, then people move to East Lake Sammamish Parkway, then they get tired at East Lake Sammamish Parkway, they move back to Sahali. Unfortunately, traffic is not quite as easy as hydraulic modeling, where water molecules behave the same every single time. Cars seem to behave differently by day of the week and hour of day. So those intersections are considered in terms of how we forecast where traffic is going to go. We also look at that external growth. So we take a look at how fast is Redmond growing versus how fast is Issaquah growing, and then how fast are those regions served by 520 or I-90 growing? Because that, again, influences, there's sort of a traffic shed on the plateau where you make a choice, am I going to go to 90 or am I going to go to 520? That sort of line moves back and forth across every time we recalibrate the model, you know, if things get better, if there's an improvement on the north side of town, then, you know, traffic shifts there and fills that up, and it then equalizes again. So I think the Transportation Master Plan is going to focus on that. That's one of the concerns in their scope of work, is how that external system is influencing it. But also, from a practical perspective, how much influence could you really have? And that would be a policy change, to want to change how you work with adjacent jurisdictions.
Excellent, thank you. And then I didn't really see any language in this document that we have tonight about the fee. So is that, the discussion of the impact fee is or is not happening tonight?
It is not. That's actually just a calculation. Once this is all approved and we know what the deficiencies are, then it's just a matter of calculating, the city already has a formula that's been adopted by the city council for calculating what the impact fee is actually going to be. And it's based on the number of new trips, the amount of new development, the cost of the projects that are, that need to be done in order to eliminate the level of service failures. So it's just a calculation with the formula that the council's adopted.
Okay, great, thank you.
I guess I have maybe a question or an opinion in a while, but first, a clarification to help here. The word on the street literally is "traffic." And we're talking, synonym is "transportation." And you talked about the entire master plan, and I'm going to look at my notes here, but there's going to be a stakeholders' meetings and surveys held in mid-June. And the first step would take a cross-section of Sammamish residents, employees, service providers, representatives, professional, community groups, and those who rely on transportation system for daily activities. So, you know, just again, clarification, that's going to happen separately of what we're doing. But what I liked about tonight was, when I looked at this in hard copy, and again, some of the things are small, but I can look at my travel route, or my neighborhood, or somebody else's, my friend's neighborhood, and see where the traffic lights are, the roundabouts are, and the flow of traffic, which has changed, and to see where maybe there's possible failures. So that's what this document here is about. And to me, being at one time a certified driver training instructor, our main goal was the safe and continuous flow of traffic.
Along with what Commissioner Crandall just mentioned, I have a question for you as far as the historical numbers here. For instance, you've got traffic volumes for a period of time. You have, even on Table T9, collision summary from 2010 to 2014, and we're going to lose that information with this update, correct? Is there any way to keep the older data on there, which I think is very helpful to see trends? Does that make sense?
It does. I mean, it's not like the city's going to wipe that data off their server. I mean, it's still there for analysis. We're trying to, I think the council's direction in this particular section was to actually tell us what's happening now, what's currently. I think the Transportation Master Plan, I've encouraged them to look at those trends. And also, again, I think this is really going to be informing that next step and that next effort. What I saw this as is sort of a business-as-usual test, is, you know, without changing any policies, you know, here's the direction transportation improvements would go. I think the Transportation Master Plan will likely look at some other things. This is, you know, developed in the early 2000s. It's fairly auto-centric, although the segment level of service that requires the addition of bike lanes and sidewalks to allow more cars on the same lane was pretty forward-thinking back then. Not many cities have that. Most cities just add lanes to make things better. But I think, again, the goal here was to really establish, where are we today to inform the changes that might happen in the Transportation Master Plan, to think about, do you want to tolerate congestion if there's transit available, or if bicycle routes are available? Or is going 40 miles an hour all day long, whether it's 5:00 p.m. or 3:00 a.m., if that's the policy, that's a very different set of capital improvements. So this was really, again, there were concerns that the data wasn't strong enough, because, you know, every one of these failures, you know, is a $10, $20, $30 million project to fix them. So it's a tremendous investment, so we want to make sure we're identifying them as best we can. There's another section, maybe, in the model calibration that I did want to point out, it's on page T60, in terms of how accurate travel demand models are and how to look at this project list and when you see a failure. You know, travel demand models are, again, they're forecasts based mostly on art. There's some science in there, but again, it's not as predictable as water. And so a lot of the failures that you'll see in the tables, you know, a segment or an intersection may be failing by, because there's 10% too much traffic. Well, our model is only plus or minus 10% when things are good. So when we see a segment or a problem that's in that, you know, 5% to 10% margin, that's something we want to look at carefully, but you may not want to jump and fix that today because that problem may be worse 20 years from now, or may not occur 20 years from now. One of the biggest changes here is that improvements to Sahali Way to the north segment of the Sahali Way 228th corridor, the model now is telling us that those could be deferred. Ultimately, something needs to be done, but it's probably not as urgent as was anticipated in the prior plan based on those 2012 counts. If you look closely, you'll see that there's some 2016 counts that are lower than 2014 counts and 2012 counts. Again, it depends on the economy, it depends on how things are being influenced in Issaquah and Redmond. If there's construction in one of those agencies, you know, the couplet in Redmond being torn up may have some things to do with it. It's very hard for us to get a good, solid baseline. But again, that's really what we're looking for here, is really retesting the current policies to see what you would get, so that that would inform that TMP update.
Any other questions?
More maybe of a kind of a lame comment, I guess, maybe a poor attempt at trying to be funny, but this whole, the front page where it says someone's front wheel a little wobbly, it just kind of makes me not think that's what our transportation wants to be thought of as a wobbly front wheel, so I don't...
Do you want specific feedback on certain sections? Would that be helpful right now?
It would definitely be helpful, and especially if there are additional questions that you have that we can answer, you know, to help with the understanding of what's going on and what we're doing and why, and what the results are and that kind of thing.
Because I just had some corrections or some things to point out. Under, this is the corrected version, the second one, T47.
So is it the clean version or the redlined version? It's the clean version?
The redlined one.
We can still find it on the redlined one.
I'll look around there.
T47 refers to the Microsoft Connector bus.
Oh, okay.
And it does refer to the Mars Hill Church site, which we shouldn't really be referring to it as such anymore. Also, I'm wondering about the connector, why in this document do we have to be so precise with location and with times of service? Park and rides are fixed, I understand that, but a connector bus can change its pickup locations. We may have other pickup locations that aren't on here that would need to be updated over time. Is there a reason why we have to say anything more than just Microsoft offers that?
Yeah, actually, the GMA requirement for this supporting document for the transportation element requires an inventory of existing facilities. So that's why we're being that specific, because we do have to say, here's what's available today, so that you could judge what you might want in addition, or you could compare it next time you do an inventory and say, oh, we lost half the service we used to have. So that's why it's that detail, that's really providing an inventory and snapshot of what's available right now.
Okay, so I would just suggest you using maybe a street address for that or an intersection. Also, under that same page towards the bottom, outside the city limits, the nearest park and ride lots are, and then there's two Cloughanes. Those are now in the city.
Yep, good.
Should I go on? It talks about Issaquah Pine Lake Road from Southeast 48th Street to Issaquah Falls City Road. Through monitoring, determine the future volume impacts when the actual town center land uses are identified. What does the town center land use have to do with Issaquah Pine Lake Road?
That's a good question. It even relates back to why the city has two of the same map, is with the amount of concern there's been about traffic. When you have a fuzzy map that says 13 different things could happen here, I cannot possibly tell you what traffic does. And when you have failures that are in the 2% to 5% range on some of your arterials, you know, whether there's, you know, 500 jobs in town center or 300, could be the 10 or 20 trips that trips one facility. So that's your major development core for the next 20 years, and it does essentially affect every street in town. Almost every development that happens affects the major arterial. So with the uncertainty of town center, you know, the more we know about what's really going to develop, because, you know, the plan's out here, what developers bring is over here, it does tend to change everything. I think some of the volume differences we see in the 2035 forecast this year versus in 2014 are a function of knowing more about what town center's developing like, seeing where it is. You know, the retail ended up closer to 228. That actually changes some trip distributions. Putting the residential on the backside is going to change some travel patterns. So that's why that relationship is there, is pretty much any land use decision you make affects Issaquah Falls City Road, 228th, East Lake Sammamish Parkway at both ends, and 43rd. I mean, the ins and outs, there's very few trips that solely stay internal to the city. Anything you do affects all those gateways.
And in the map, as we refer to streets like that Southeast 48th, is there any way to get more specific street names on the map? You just name major corridors, and some of us are familiar with some sides of the city and not other sides. Does that make this document more usable if we could at least, even on an online basis, be able to zoom in?
Sure.
Thank you. Okay. I think I had one more, but I'll wait. On T72, the clean, it refers to deficiencies on 228th. And I'm wondering if you could just refer to the fact that there are three high schools instead of just referencing Skyline. My last question is about the fact that we've got two segments of road that are owned by other jurisdictions. We've got that piece along Issaquah Pine Lake Road, but then there's also a piece on Doocy Hill Road that's owned by King County. Is that incorporated in here in the same way to say that there needs to be collaboration and perhaps discussions, further work with King County in the similar wording that you have to work with Issaquah?
If it doesn't, we can figure out how to add it.
Thank you.
That's a good catch.
I have a few detailed things, too. I hope they don't cover what Nancy already covered. I think all of the base maps, when referring to streets or on a chart, when referring to streets or a chart, and you have that street in the text, you should name that street on the map or in the chart. And some of the charts don't have keys or description, some of the maps don't have keys, and the charts don't have descriptions of the acronyms, and I think that would be helpful on the top of each chart, since traffic has so many acronyms. On T19, in the redline section, I'm sorry to do this to everybody, the freight route connects to 202, but it doesn't go down to I-90 outside the city limits. And I don't know why it would do that. That seems inconsistent to me. I like the size and scale of the town center graphics on T22 and 23, and I just wish they could be, we could boost up some of the graphics on the other maps that seem so tiny and fine that they're hard to read. Some of the street names are, you have to use a magnifying glass to see them in print, and I think some people will be looking at them in print and not just online, so they won't be able to read them. I do not find the cross-sections on T4 to be large. I do not find the cross-sections on T4 to be large enough to read. In addition, the cars and the people aren't in scale with the horizontal scale of the streets, so it gives the wrong impression. That's on T4. I'm going by page numbers. I think it's confusing to have the charts be T-something and the page numbers to be T-something. I wish they would be different. I can't see the difference on the cross-section between a minor arterial and a collector. They look exactly the same, and I was wondering what the difference is. Could it be the number of curb cuts or something that we can't see? That would be something that, maybe it's a mistake, maybe they got the wrong section in there. I heavily went on to aesthetics because it says on, on T92, that aesthetics is considered a function of the street, yet it's not described anywhere outside of that sentence. So, I got into that, and I, I'm thinking you probably don't want to hear it tonight. If you don't, that's fine. If you, if you do, I will tell you what I wrote down.
And also, Commissioner Garrison, you can also email it to them afterward. I'm sure that would be helpful.
Okay.
But go ahead.
Do it anyway. I think a plan, if you're saying that aesthetics are a function of the street, then let's show what those aesthetics might be. Perhaps we have urban sections with trees and grates, benches and trellis screening. Perhaps we have open rural sections where we have meadows and distant views. Perhaps we have forested sections where we have native trees and a tunnel effect. Perhaps we have riparian sections with acknowledgement of the creeks and wetlands we're going through. And maybe then what we have mostly are suburban sections where we have strips of street trees and plantings, as you have shown in your cross-sections. I think because of aesthetics, grades, buffers, and possible future transit shelters, I would recommend a 100-foot minimum ride away for that primary arterial. It's just, it feels so close in there, no room for buffers, no room for aesthetics, and no, not much room for grading if we have to. I would, I would prefer 125 feet if we could get it. I would like the cross-sections to show another street, a smaller one perhaps, like, perhaps a Woonorf, which has been successfully done in, in many of the cities around us. It would be a street, a Woonorf is a street that the people can share with cars because there's so little traffic on it. It's kind of like a big driveway, but it is very well landscaped usually. And I would love to see that in here. And it isn't outside the policy that's already there. It's part of aesthetics, which you've already said is in here. My last concern was transit service and activities. We're putting these activities along 228th because it's a mass transit route, I guess. And what that seems to do is it overloads 228th and reduces the level of service. And everybody in the neighborhoods has to get in their car to drive to these activities and these services. I would like to see this plan promote non-motorized movement, as it says it's supposed to, and walking should be an important aspect of the plan. We should be looking at putting some activities out in the neighborhoods where people don't have to drive to them, but they could walk to them. And I think we're missing the opportunity with the advent of Amazon. We, we're getting less into the box stores and the great big parking lots. We could use delivery centers for UPS and FedEx drop-off and possibly in the neighborhoods. Maybe there could be coffee shops with Wi-Fi or in-home daycare. I'm not trying to put commercial in a residential neighborhood as much as, because I think it could be kind of owner-occupied. D densities could be increased in these areas to support little services like that. And it might reduce the trips per day on our primary arterials and improve the level of service. I think that vision would promote the community and, and walking both.
Is that it? All right. Does anybody have any other comments or changes tonight? Mary Anderson?
Very mundane. Again, you know, under, I mentioned this earlier, the goals and policies under Volume 1. So, the transportation element in Volume 1, goals and policies, now all those page numbers are, are not matching up. So, an example I've got here is from page 87 of the Transportation Element, Volume 1, Goals and Policies. And in the margin, it refers to the freight routes section, page T14, and the right, anyway, I'm not sure if that's, this is a time that that all needs to be updated, or if it can be, given.
Yeah, well, it should be, or else people are going to get confused and they're going to look, whoops, didn't find that.
Yep, yep.
So, again, I wouldn't, you know, that's not changing the policy, it's just making a note to say where to look for that technical information in this document, so I think that's reasonable.
That's not considered.
Sounds like something that should be on an errata sheet.
It's in, it really does. Last thing, I just have to, I mentioned the Clahani Park and Ride, and now I can't even think of, where's their two part, where are their park and rides in Clahani?
We'll confirm. We'll confirm that whole thing, yeah.
30 spaces each, and I can't for the life of me think of where they are.
There's only one park and ride lot shown on the park and ride map, and there's several
Excuse my interruption. I just wanted to remind the chair and the commission that we're coming up on 8:30.
Oh, I was, I move that we extend the June 1st Planning Commission meeting to 8:45.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say no. Okay, that carries 6-0, so we will go until 8:45. I think we're, are we, I think we're pretty wrapped up on staff, or on Planning Commission comments. Okay.
David, did you want to go through the last, I think it's just a
Last slide.
...iteration of earlier comments, but. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, I'm just here to say again that two weeks from tonight, on June 15th, there'll be a Planning Commission public hearing, and the commission will make a recommendation to the council on whether to adopt the changes as proposed. Then council will meet twice in July to discuss the same material that you're discussing. And then on July 6th, we will move on to the second of the two docketed proposals, which are related to the Public Works element, Public Works information on the, in the comp plan.
Thank you. Thank you all for some really good work. Okay, so at this point, we are going to accept public comment. I suppose it would only be for comment related to the transportation element. So, anyone liking to speak can come up now.
Hello, my name's Mary Victor. I live at 408 208th Avenue Northeast in Sammamish, and I left my sheet at home, I read, so I can't tell you what pages, but my changes are small, but I think they're important. Something you could put on an errata sheet. I believe with all the meetings I attended last year, the thing that is called Trails, Bike Ways, and Pathways Plan is actually renamed now to the Non-Motorized Plan, but incorporates the same thing. So, John actually had them both listed on his slide, but that's the type of change that I think needs to get updated. Also, there are a few pages that show connectivity along the Inglewood Road, and it showed going from the roundabout down to the lake that it's just a yellow, it doesn't have sidewalks, but that project is actually finishing up. I believe it's almost ready for the final asphalt overlay. So, since it's so hard to get changes into the comp plan, it would be nice if current projects that are finishing could be updated in those maps. There are some numbers in the traffic where the 2016 is lower than the 2012 and 14, and I do believe that trends are important, but I also think it's really important that they use the new data. So, I don't know if there is a way to keep the old one or have it in an old dependency or something or other. But I will tell you that driving around in 2016, there was a lot of work going on East Lake Sammamish Parkway in the Inglewood Project, so people were just not doing those routes at all. Like, there were power poles going in, and it was this huge construction line, and only when, so I think that probably did affect some of the 2016 numbers. The other thing that I don't know how you do this in traffic counts, but there's a lot of gravel trucks that go around, and even though it's a gravel truck with one trailer or two trailers, the amount of beat-up that it does on the road, I think is massively important in considering some of these projects, and I don't think that's tracked. Like, I live on Lewis, off Lewis Thompson Hill Road, and I know there's a ton of traffic that goes up there too fast for the road and probably beats it up, so I don't know if there's any way to count that in your traffic decisions or that. Some of you have talked about the maps being too small to read, and I know even in the comprehensive plan, that's hard. So, what I typically had to do in the past is do a specific public records request to ask for the specific figure be sent to me as a PDF version, so I can zoom it. So, instead of really taking that amount of time for multiple people and staff, I think it would be advisable that the maps, when they're ready, that they could be put in the document that you could read, but the PDF version of those could be available somewhere on the website, so you could click on them, you could go to your area that you live in or your neighbor's area, because the actual PDF version, the maps are very zoomable, and they would have more things on them. So, those are things just from reading a lot of documents in the last two years, I would recommend doing, a lot of them are small changes, and I think if you make them now, then you don't have to hear from me again, and I don't have to be around to tell you, so thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak tonight? Okay. So, we need a motion to adjourn.
I move we adjourn.
Seconded.
Okay, all those in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say no. And we are adjourned. We are adjourned this evening at 8:34.